And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The light present you, uh, it's a difference of appreciation for coming tonight and reading as a pledge. I'm here with Grayson, uh, and Trevor Davis, and thank you very much. Good morning, guys. And as I always tell all of our students for reading as a pledge, you're certainly well equipped to come around for the rest of the evening. You are not required to. You can be long and somewhat boring.
All right. Next, we have the reports from our student representatives. Looks like David will be starting us up tonight? Or, excuse me, Catherine will be starting us up tonight?
Yeah, so our north update this week mostly has to do with our homecoming week, which is this week, and the theme is Candyland. So you can see our T-shirt design up there. Homecoming week, we have a lot of activities at night, so I'll just list them quick. So Sunday night, you can see some of the pictures. We had hall decorating sponsored by Key Club. So that's where each grade decorates a hallway. And then at the end of the week, we, um, we have secret judges who, then at the end of the week, we discover who won the contest, and it's just sort of a fun thing. And then Monday was movie night, which was sponsored by Polaris. We watched Charlie and the Chocolate Factory outside. Tuesday, we had drama's improv night. Wednesday was Powder Puff, which I don't know who won, but either juniors or seniors girls will be pretty happy. Thursday, the Northwest Talent Show at Alberta Kimball at 7:30, only $2 if you find yourself with nothing to do tomorrow. Friday, we have the parade, football game, tailgate party, marching band at halftime. Should be pretty fun. And then you can see the pool noodles, which I spent all weekend making for decorations for our dance. We coiled up pool noodles and put them on PVC pipe and wrapped them in cellophane to be decorations. It's sure to be sweet. Some of the dress-up days, we've, Monday was comfy day, which you can see. Tuesday was twin day, so we had our choir and band teacher dress up and lots of students. Wednesday, we had Spartan spirit, so that was today. Tomorrow, we're wearing our homecoming T-shirts. And Friday are our class color days. Our sports update, girls tennis had subsectionals on Tuesday, and number one doubles team, Meg Hartzell and Alyssa Shaper, are continuing on to sectionals tomorrow, and so is number one singles, Savannah Prehn, also pictured. Girls golf team qualified for sectionals, so you can see them up there. They're pretty happy about it. Cross-country sectionals at the Lake Breeze Golf Course, the 24th of October. And football is still going strong, 5-0, and they are first place in the FBA South and going to have playoffs soon. So that's really exciting. We are excited. And tomorrow, the Northwest football game, or Friday, excuse me. The next thing is the community's gallery walk. Students at communities at Oshkosh North prepared and researched different aspects of Oshkosh's history to try and inspire a mural with local artists. They were on Fox 11, and it was a pretty big deal last Thursday, I think. And the mural is going to be right across from the Grand Opera House, 103 High Ave. And that's really exciting because it was such a good experience for all of the students. They really enjoyed preparing and learning about Oshkosh and then also giving it to community members who were interested in their topics. Pumpkin carving, we had, the art department had 72 pumpkins donated to help them prepare for the Hegrap Wetland Reserve's Creepy Crawly event this weekend. So the art classes got to carve pumpkins, and it was really fun for them, something that doesn't happen all the time, so we were excited. Here are some upcoming events. It's, um, the, some of these are from last time, so the choir concert and the orchestra concert and Spartan Spooktacular are all from last time. But the Fall Play, house for sale, is November 6th through the 8th and 9th at 7:00 PM and 2:00 PM at North. That one is, is looking to be good. There are some really funny parts and some really serious parts, and we do all of them very well, so it's very nice. We have our Veterans Day Assembly on November 11th in the Fieldhouse, and the Fall Sports Banquet on November 12th. And I don't know if we can show this or if we have volume. And if you could, start it at about 27 seconds or 25, whatever you've got. It would be really nice. But this is what the choir class made to teach us all the words to our fight song this week, because since it's our homecoming week, so I just, if we can, I just thought it would have fun. Thank you for being present mode.
(Singing) Oh, no, and the Spartan's on towards victory. We shall stand beside you, loyal fans who'll always be. You rock, rock along, the North High Spartan's ever a play. Spirit and pride will be our guide as we shall Spartan fair.
Next time you hear the fight song, try to sing the words.
Yeah!
That's great.
Thank goodness for the other kids.
I know, it's so great.
Okay, now transitioning to Oshkosh West. So this is a presentation for October. We're gonna start off, we don't have our homecoming week this week, but we've been obviously making the preparations in order to do homecoming next week. So what we have going on is, I'll give you an update of how it all went la, um, next month, but we have going on the homecoming week, dress-up days, Powder Puff football with the finals at Titan Stadium, Ironman volleyball, and the new sumo challenge. That sumo challenge is a new addition we replaced from the original penny wars because we thought that this would get a lot more participation. So how we have it is during the homecoming week, you've got five days, four of which will be each class's day to get a nomination to have a freshman champion or a sophomore champion. And we're going to be fund, using that money to fundraise. And on Friday during the pep rally, we will have the underclassmen freshman versus the underclassmen sophomore, and it's same thing for the upperclassmen. And that'll be a big feature into what we're doing. So that's kind of something that, that's, we're doing new for homecoming week, and it should be really fun. So hopefully I can get you a video of how that comes out. So we also are doing the homecoming court ballots through email. We got our nominations in, and now it's time to finalize things through, the vote through email, so that should be coming up soon. The pep rally, it's gonna be student-led again this year. Our Ryan Seacrests for the day will be Timmy Lutz and myself. And the T-shirt cannon returns. So last year, we worked with a physics teacher to actually repair this T-shirt cannon, and it's another feature that, feature that we have with the pep rally that's always fun. As well as games and performances, we have twirl team, dance team, and a whole lot of different games that we put on to really get the spirit up and going. So then the next day after that, we have the dance Saturday night. We got awesome decorations. In fact, the, last week, the government passed a budget for the decorations specifically for that, and this dance theme will literally be space, so it's gonna be fun. We also hired the Beats2Go DJ, so we're kind of finalized with that. And then now transitioning to the upcoming events. As you can see, we have a lot going on at West with sports, so make sure to pick, pick your favorite and go to the tennis, soccer, football, volleyball, cross-country, golf, or swimming up there. And some other upcoming events. Now, this is more music-based, so Octo, October 9th, like you said, we have the Oshpalooza Talent Show. Now, this is really cool because you have many performance, such as comedic acts all the way to string quartets. So make sure to go there because there's a whole lot of talent in Oshkosh, and I really want people to see that, so that's gonna be in Kimball, uh, that's gonna be in our auditorium at West. So then quickly after we, the October 17th, we have the marching band performance, and that will be the same day as the West homecoming game. And this is really cool because at West, our band director, Mr. Wilson, he gets together North, Lewards, and West, and we pull together this giant marching band. And we're doing, like I talked about last month, the Dark Side of the Moon and the Wizard of Eyes, uh, compliment, complimentary of songs. And then, let's just see, four days later, we have the Fall Choir Concert, and that's gonna be at 8:00 PM. Mr. Berensen is gonna be directing that one, and it's called What a Wonderful World. October 23rd is the West Orchestra Concert, and this is kind of unique because they actually have a symphony aspect to it because they have the band sometimes coming in to play a couple songs, so that's really cool to see. So I really stress going to that. October 28th, that's gonna be the auditions for our new musical, with Mr. Berensen directing, called Cinderella. And then another thing that's in November is gonna be early, so it's the November 4th, and that's gonna be the Fall Band Concert, which we have a lot of complex pieces to be played. Something new going on is the ACT assessment for freshmen. It's a new state assessment where all freshmen participate, and we have detailed training for staff proctors. And it's an online assessment for students, and just an announcement, the makeups are next week. Now, the blood drive. So in September, we had a blood drive, but I'm gonna quickly talk about February. So our next blood drive, we host three, would be in February, and that's gonna be the 13th. So how we're doing something differently this year is we're gonna be piloting a new online system. So this should be way more efficient, and we should get way more people signed up because it takes a while for everybody to get on paper. But one, one thing that we did a promo this September that got more participation from our last ones was we got nearly 100 people participating because of those costumes that you see there. Now, our blood drive committee nominated Tess and I to go in the costumes and run around during lunch, getting people to come and participate and sign up. So that was fun. So it was a great turnout, and we look forward to having more next blood drive. And then the courtyards. So two years ago, we had this big idea of, let's give the courtyards a purpose at West. And this was a big task to look for, but so far we've been doing very well. The F and C wing are completed. So the only thing that we wanna do really with the F wing is to write more policy to get used for that fall or spring lunch. And you can already go in there, but we need to get more tables in there, whether that's going through the workshop or buying more tables. It's something that we're gonna be looking into. Also, the C wing is finished, and we basically extended the library use for outside. And yes, fresh air is included. So our new proposals to complete this big goal that we have always had would be completing the E and W courtyards. We already have the ideas and who we're gonna be contacting to get a hold of. The only thing left is to be getting the finances and the planning, and that's something that we're looking to take care of this winter. And we want all those, your courtyards in operation by spring to complete that big goal. And then tech, technology integration. So I spoke with Mrs. Levy, and so we have a bunch of Chromebooks this year, and we educate teachers on the technology and how to use it and incorporate it in their classes. So next year, we wanna take that, we wanna educate the students with that new technology. And I remember Mrs. Levy and I were talking about how this can lead to different independent learning, which will prepare them more for post-high school plans, and it's really, really cool because students can now take the material and really run with it. So that's something that I love to see going on at West. Also, we had this cool Haiti program going on. Two men from Haiti came in to speak about everything going on with Haiti contemporarily, and two problems, which were poverty and child slavery, they kind of introduced and talked about, and its impacts on the country, and also how it increased after the 2010 earthquake. But they put a positive spin on this, and they educated us in the culture through dancing and drumming, and they really shared their culture. Mainly, they gave education on their country and the, and its current state. So that's kind of what's been going on in West, and I'll have a lot more for you next month, so have a great Wildcat Wednesday. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I'll let Kim have enough time to get reset. Oh, that was easier than, than going the other way. Well, great. This evening, we have a number of items to celebrate in the district. The Minute to Win Celebration at Second Chance. Second Chance is a program in partnership with Winnebago County, and, and we host and operate that program with our staff. Second Chance students and staff participate in a Minute to Win Celebration for reaching the four-week mark with 92% of the students in good standing. Students have demonstrated the school's core expectations of being responsible, respectful, responsible, and self-reliant. You'll begin hearing those words repeatedly across the district as we deal with more and more PBS school programs. Creepy Crawlers events included North artwork. I believe this was covered in our North report, so I'll just skip on because I don't wanna be repetitive. Committing to excellence at Tipler Middle School, Compact Math is an accelerated math course available for seventh graders. It combines seventh and eighth grade math in one year. In eighth grade, the students are being able to take algebra, which is typically taught as a high school class. By doing this, students are able to take calculus in their final year, a course normally available, not available to students. In order to take Compact Math class, sixth grade students must have a good score on their final and be recommended by their sixth grade teachers. The students shown above are this year's seventh grade class who qualified. South Park receives the Shopko Grant Award. South Park was awarded a $250 grant from Shopko Foundation's Community Charitable Grant Program. The money will be used to support the Panther Way PBIS program at South Park. Lakeside Way, this is the lakeside first year of implementing PBIS known as the Lakeside Way, and they're off to a fantastic start. School-wide expectations in common areas, lunchroom, hallways, recess, et cetera, have been established and taught and reinforced. Students are being acknowledged for being respectful, responsible, and safe. On Wednesdays, there are drawings for students to earn different types of recognition for their positive behavior. The fancy table at lunch, which I had a chance to observe this past week, has been popular with students in the first of the month, and exciting time to sit and dine with tablecloths and, and real, real tools for eating as opposed to simply trays. So, great experience. Environmental Ed at Oakwood. Oakwood Environmental Education Charter School, along with the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Science Students, participated in Environmental Education Day in the Sheldon Nature Center. The students and staff participated in hands-on environmental science experience throughout the 26-acre outdoor classroom. The Oshkosh West named 2013-14 Blue Star School. Congratulations to the students of Oshkosh West High School who took the Financial Literacy Certification Test through WIIS-E. Oshkosh West was named a 2013-14 Blue Star School, a school testing 10 or more students and must have achieved a 75% passing rate on the Financial Literacy Certification Test and have either a majority of students at a given grade level or take a, or test or have students who have taken, took, achieve an average score of 80% or higher to be named a Blue Star School. Later on, we'll be recognizing individual contributions to this effort in financial literacy in, at West High School. Manufacturing Day, opportunity for high school students. Last week, I had the opportunity to greet and to hear presentations and tours of two busloads of students from Oshkosh North and West High School at, had the opportunity on Friday, October 3rd. Manufacturing Day is to learn more about manufacturing careers through tours and presentations of the Advanced Manufacturing Center of Fox Valley Tech Institute at the Oshkosh Defense Manufacturing Facility. For students who are interested in hands-on experience in manufacturing careers while still in high school, Patty Anderson Schrew, Education and Workforce Coordinator for the Oshkosh Chamber, recommends students pursue a youth apprenticeship placement while on their junior or senior year in high school. And I believe right now, I think, Julie, if I'm not correct, I think maybe 18, 17?
Correct, 17 placements.
17 placements in this ever-growing program. In Oshkosh, we currently have students with youth apprenticeships in engineering, machining, welding, purchasing, accounting, and marketing positions at local manufacturing companies. These students are exploring and learning more about careers they are interested in before they graduate, so they can make better long-term choices, stated Anderson Schrew. Next, One, Two, Three Smile. During a recent superintendent school site visit in the advanced placement class at Oshkosh North High School, I was invited to participate in their discussion of selfies. I suddenly was pulled into a classroom, and there I was, in selfies classroom, which has been widely distributed. They were in a competition, I believe, with their principal on this issue. Superintendent's calendar for the past two weeks is so listed. And now I'm gonna turn the Superintendent's Report program over to Julie Moser, who will make some introductions regarding the contribution to financial literacy.
So, good evening. It's my, it's my pleasure to introduce two individuals with me this evening. Gulf ID of our strategic plan has, has us working towards our students being college career and community ready. And so I have with me tonight Nicole Peterson, our CTE Coordinator, and Peter Prickett, President of F&amp;B Fox Valley Bank, with us tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to Nicole to tell you more about our partnership. Nicole?
Good evening. So one of the things that we always talk about is being college career and community ready. So what we have defined that is three different areas. Career exploration is one, and you saw a little bit of that with the youth apprenticeship piece, and getting kids really thinking about what do they wanna do and where they wanna be. So that's the first piece. The second piece is the career and life skills, which you will, you know, in K5 and 68, we rolled that out. The high schools are so anxious to get that because it's really one of those things that all the employees are looking for, and the kids really should know, we think, and they really do, it's just are they demonstrating them. So we're working with the Society of Human Resource Managers, known as SHRM, to really create some real-life examples for kids. So as a teacher, we can always say, this is really how it is, but when the HR people come in and say it, it's like gold. So we're working, that's the second piece. And then the third piece, really why we're here and why Peter is here, is the financial literacy piece. As you know, since about 2007, we have required the personal finance course, and kids can get it in a variety of ways. So personal finance taught in business, the consumer skills class taught in family consumer, agribusiness management, which is the capstone course in ag. Then we have UW, the cap course that's offered. And then we also offered it in the summer. Riverside is teaching it. So every kid that walks out of OASD is getting touched by the financial skills, and you know, there is a, it's a very daunting task. There's so many things being thrown at kids. So the beautiful thing about Peter and F&amp;B Fox Valley, they have sponsored a program called Everfly. And it's, it's a software program, it's online, and what it really does, it solidifies what we're trying to do in the classroom. It gives kids an opportunity to do some hands-on. The teacher can deliver some information. This is just a huge reinforcement, and really all the teachers that are using it have really found that kids can, can really clarify some of the things, and you can't teach it too many times. It's like the repetition just really gets in their brain, and that's really where this software program helps. And if you see some of the numbers, between North and West, about 536 students went through the program, 162 of them became fully certified, and Melody McGuire taught the class over the summer, and every single one of her students, she did not require it, but every single one of her students went through the program, got the certification. And again, it's just one of those things that we can let them go into the world knowing that they're gonna make good financial decisions, because if you look back at two, maybe some of the financial decisions you made, you're like, whoa, if I would've known better, I maybe wouldn't have been in that situation. So we're really thankful for this Everfly program. It's a great opportunity for kids to dive in and really try some things, and it's that self-paced learning that really allows it to kind of sink in. So we're really excited, and we really wanted to make sure that Peter was aware that we appreciated. All the teachers that I reached out to, they're like, please don't let it go away. We really, really like it as, as an additive. So I think that's a tribute to not only what Peter and F&amp;B Fox Valley is doing to help enhance our student learning, but really the teachers being open and accepting to going, I'm not always the expert, I need to bring in these resources, and why not bring in the financial institutions? So we wanted to just honor Peter and F&amp;B Fox Valley for this great program and what they've done, and so I don't know if you wanna say how, anything about that or what you're doing?
We're just very pleased to be able to do it. We think obviously as a bank, it's important to help financial literacy, and we too often see the effects of financial illiteracy. We don't understand how to use credits. We're very pleased to do it. We're, we were hesitant at first, would the thing take off, would the staff embrace it? The first year we did it, I think it was 300-some students and about 100 became certified, so we're very pleased with 13 that that number went up now to over 500 taking the class and 162 being fully certified. What fully certified is, is taking each, the test, each of the nine modules and getting a score, I think it's 75 or even higher. So all those students took at least some of those, and we are also looking at, are there incentives we could offer to the students to try to get them to go to the next level and go through all the programs and all the modules and become certified. We're very pleased how it's taken off, and so pleased that we have committed now to sponsor this through the 2017 and 2018 school year as well. And we operated both at North and West. So we're pleased to be able to do that. So thank you for your support. Maybe that, teachers need that, but it's been well received, we feel.
I would just add one comment. Of most people in the community expect we teach, you know, what were the original Peabody Units of Education, the math, the science, the languages, English, all of those. But of areas where people don't fully understand that we do deliver on this issue, I get more calls, and I probably get two or three per month, from people asking, what are you doing in financial literacy? And what the joy is, is being able to report to them, the components that are in our high school curriculum, and also earlier, that the Oshkosh area school district is very much a leader in, in the state of Wisconsin in engaging in financial literacy preparation for students. And it's one of those that, the people on the street who look at schools and say, yes, you're teaching these things that are academic skills, but what about life skills? And certainly, financial literacy is one of those. So we're really grateful for the assistance.
So, so thank you, F&amp;B Fox Valley, and thank you, Peter, for helping us build community through education, so.
I just wanna say thank you as well. I think this is so needed in our community, and we see too many examples every day of people perhaps making bad decisions or decisions that could've been better had they had the education. I do have a question as well. May a student repeat a module or two in order to attain the certification, or once they've taken the test, are they done?
No, I think they can go back, to my knowledge, yes.
And I also wanted to give a shout-out to Melody McGuire and the business education teachers from both high schools. They had really, excuse me, been instrumental in the district moving
Yeah.
along this financial literacy line. Sorry about that. So it's great to hear that they're getting some accolades, which ties in with our first strategic goal, so
Right.
thank you, Melody, and all the other business education teachers who have collaborated with Peter and others to make this happen.
That's great.
David, you?
Yeah, and especially with the student government, we do a lot of financial transactions, and being in that summer course, we have, the majority of the people passed through that, that whole course, and it really helps out with checks and just balances and figuring out all the finances, especially with this huge courtyard project that I talk about. So that, again, I thank you. So, that again, I thank you.
Awesome.
Yes, thank you very much for your commitment to our schools. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have athletic coaching compensation study.
Can we have the, one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm off by one. Peter, Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation.
When, when President Wiedenhoff announced that, Mark Roloff sits through so many meetings, he, he gets so used to having the agenda in, in pattern at, at off-cycle, so.
I've only been doing this twice a month for thirty years, so I'm pretty used to it.
Right, that's right.
Hello, I'm Diane Penzen-Stadler, and of course, Mark Roloff and Brenda Hickson are with me. Mark and I are on the Board of GoEBC, and Brenda is our hired help for the interim to get us launched. GoEBC is a brand-new corporation. We've just passed our bylaws. We have a strategic plan up and running. We're in the process of seeking out our CEO as well as a communications manager, and we'll be soon launching new brand, new website, and we're also in the process of a fundraising campaign. So, that's kind of where we are, the thumbnail right now. GoEBC is the Greater Economic, or Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation, and this is an unprecedented organization because we have so many people at the table and on the board, unlike anything we've seen before in the Oshkosh area. We have education. Stan is on our board. We have community foundation, private industry, municipalities with Mark's representation, as well as Alan Davis is there as staff, and county government is there. So, it's really a unique situation. We also have Tourism Bureau, the Chamber's at the table. So, all of these parties are coming together really for one primary goal, and that is to grow and to recruit new business in the greater Oshkosh area. What that means to you, I think, as a school district is more people, more little people, more students, more enrollment, more tax dollars. And then conversely, we're going to rely on our education systems to really fill those skills and jobs. And so, that's why it's so important to have education at the table on, on this board. So, that's kind of the broad overview. Oshkosh has amazing offerings here, and historically, we just have not done a great job all speaking with one voice and telling the rest of the world about it. And that's changing as we speak. So, that's the overview. Do you want to add anything?
Just a few things. I, I think creating that atmosphere where we're also letting existing businesses know that we can be a resource for business expansion. Statistics show that eighty percent of economic development really comes from within the community. So, while we need to do a lot of promotion to get Oshkosh promoted and made aware of out in the business world, we really need to focus on our existing businesses and looking for opportunities that a business may not be able to, may, think they may not be able to do because they don't think they have the resources, whether it's educational resources or financial resources. We have to open up that, that whole world. So, it's having that broad spectrum of participants, the schools, the financial institutions. Peter, I've had discussions with Peter Prickett about this, all our banks, and then the businesses themselves. The majority of our board consists of private businesses whose sole interest is in helping rise the tide that will raise all the ships in the community. And that's really what's, that's what economic development at its core is all about. And then hopefully, with success, we will be able to tell our students, our children, that they will be able to stay in the community that they've grown up in and be able to continue and perhaps expand their own business or get a job in the community that, that is something meaningful to them so they realize that. I think what the school district's doing and showing people that there's opportunities out there for careers, very good-paying careers that can let them stay in this community is something that we want to focus on. And I think you're going to get that because we're going to provide leadership, direction, coordination, and direct services to advance economic development in the greater Oshkosh area.
Questions? Comments?
You said you're currently still looking for a CEO and, or, what, another, and another position?
Communications person.
Communications.
Are the first two positions, isn't that correct? Yes.
Where, where are you going to be housed? Just out of curiosity.
In Mark's office?
No, not quite. We are working with several of our partners to identify a location. We've set up several different committees. Site location is one of those committees. I'm sitting on the hiring committee, and we're, we're actually going to be going through applications in the next couple of weeks to pare down that group. We're going to be, we've looked state and nationwide for economic development professionals that can, can come in here. We've identified a staffing plan that the first two that we're going after is the CEO itself and then also the marketing person. Marketing, and it's not, and it's communications, it's not just promotion, it's also making businesses in the community aware of what we're doing and where they can get resources to, to assist themselves in expanding their businesses. That's what we're, that's our main focus. We're also looking at positions in research because doing research, making information available to businesses that they may not even be aware is out there, that type of research services that this organization, organization can provide, and then basic account managers, people that will go out and service these accounts. And every business in town is a potential account that we'll be working on.
How will this be funded?
We're in the process right now of launching our funding campaign. And again, going back to the private sector, we'll look to the private sector for the, the majority of the funding. But there will be funds, you know, from the, from the municipalities. We also have engaged the townships. There's representatives from the townships around the Oshkosh area because it's not just about the city of Oshkosh, it's about the impact on all of the surrounding townships. So, we have representative, representation there at the board, too. So, you know, our expectation is that there will be some monies that the municipalities or county government will be able to bring forward. But we really want to rely, we want the preponderance of our funding to be on private entity. I think part of our message is we, we can't, we can't appear as though we're just going to government and saying, help. You know, we have to, we have to have that appearance of the private entities willing to work hard at this ourselves. So, we're looking for broad and deep commitments, three-year, three-year funding plan from some of these folks, so.
Thank you.
We're not here for money from the school board, too. That's all I'll say.
Certainly hope not the seventy-five million that's listed.
Yeah. To answer your question, too, about the, about the, the location, I, I just joined the board in June, and I sort of feel like it's my full-time job now already. So, we've already split out, and we have so many people working on so many different parts and pieces of this and working fast because.
When do you plan to be up and running?
Well, it's, I think as soon as that CEO is on. And essentially, we, we sort of are up and running. I mean, we have our bylaws passed. We, we are, we are a corporation. We have a strategic plan in place. But I, right now, we have a board, you know, just really churning to get a lot of these things done. We have a resource development committee right now. We have a marketing committee right now. We have a facilities committee right now. So, we're all, you know, everybody that's sitting on that board is wearing a number of hats, working to pull this all off. And then as soon as that CEO is on, I think that will help take some of that, that burden from the board and, and really move the organization forward.
We're on parallel tracks to do the hiring as well as the fundraising, and there's always a chicken and egg discussion you have with that. So, we're working on both at the same time. Meanwhile, Brenda is a de facto staff member. There's city staff involved. Brenda's a contractor with the city right now. We're loaning her out to GoEBC. We have staff from the Champco Economic Development, or Industrial Development Corporation, which will reformat once all, this is all done. The Champco Board's going through that right now, what they're going to do. The idea is to consolidate it around GoEBC. And then other groups, we expect the participation from the school district, from the technical college, is really more in-kind contributions, staff contributions to, to committees and, and the resources that they bring to bear, and looking for those partnerships, the things that, that you would do anyway to advance education towards economic development. It's getting us all in the same room at the same time to say, what contributions can we make to make this all work together?
The university has loaned out a couple of individuals as we were starting up to get us, to get us going. That was critical to having us be able to do that.
I would just like to add the experience I've had with, from the original seed leadership and Bill Wyman and, and the city and Mark's leadership, that they were very pointed in the beginning was that they were not going to leave the three levels of education out, outside of this, that the K-12, pre-K-12, the technical college and the university were partners in this because we all share in the same milieu of issues that face all of us and that, and both with training students at all levels and preparing students, but also, also the whole issue of our preparation of students for potentially benefiting from the work of GoEBC in the future. And we look forward to that continued work and effort, and we're certainly glad, and I know from my technical college and university colleagues, we all were pretty much both pleased and somewhat surprised of the level of engagement that this, the wisdom of this group had in pulling us all into this process.
Well, the education systems are really an economic driver as well, and they really are an attraction point when someone is looking to locate a business in an area, they look at the education systems, not only the K to 12, as you mentioned, but also if, if they're going to continue to educate employees, they want to know, how strong is that technical college or how, how, you know, progressive is that university? And our university, our education systems here are so integrated with economic development, we, we need them at the table. That's a really important component there, so.
You can't leave anything to chance when you're dealing with a prospect because you never know what trigger is going to bring a business to a community. And I had an experience once where I talked to a business after they had chosen to relocate in the community I was working, and I said, what did it? And he was talking about how he brought his wife to town, and they were showing, were showing him around town. And the mayor at the time spoke about the great German program we had at the high school. And guess whose son took German? And some of the other communities didn't have German, and suddenly, they said, that German program was really impressive. And it's like, you're kidding me, right? It was, it was all about the German program? Well, not entirely. It was, it was the economic package that you gave and the support you have here and there, but it captured the spouse's attention. You never know what's going to close the sale. So, everything needs to be there. We have to put our best foot forward, no matter what it is, because you never know what's going to trip the trigger of, of, of a successful prospect.
I think it's also the reason that Tourism Bureau is there. So often, people are visiting a place and then they've decided, this is, this is a great community, maybe we want to make a home here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
Next is the Athletic Coaching Compensation Study.
Good evening. Mr. Jardarski is going to give you a copy of our study, and that'll be getting around here in a few seconds. But before that, historically, in the Oshkosh Area School District, athletic coaching stipends were derived from the teacher salary, the teacher base, and then a percent of a stipend. So, for example, right now, the, the base, or the base was going into this year of thirty-three thousand, nine forty-six, and if they, and this is not part of the study at all yet, so just hang on with that, please. But the base is thirty-three, nine forty-six, and if a, if a coaching stipend was ten percent, it was ten percent of that, of that, of that base. And so, what, what triggered everything for us this, this summer was that it, it appeared in July that we were going to be moving the teacher salary base forward, which we did, to thirty-eight, zero twenty-two. Well, at that point in time, the athletic coordinators and Sushorn and I came together and said, you know, if the teacher base is going to go up about four thousand dollars, what does that mean for our athletic coaching stipends? What does that mean? And from there, we thought, well, I think it's a good time to do a study. Let's see what, what the other, other coaching stipends are in the conference and analyze that and then determine how we want to go forward. In addition to this, we, we also were well-aware that the longevity that our coaches were getting in the past, that longevity has been frozen from the 2010 to 2011 school year, which we also wanted to take a good look at, at, at also. So, we, so we did the study, and I should say that Brad and Craig did, did all the gathering of the data and, and tremendous amount of the work and brought it together. And, could I have a copy of that, Brad? Thank you. So, with that background, if, if you look at the study here, on the left-hand side, basically, all of our athletic coaching positions. And then as you, as you move, I'm going to go all the way to the right because I, I don't want to get caught up in the right, but right, on the right side are the school districts that we did the, the study with, Fond du Lac, Kekana, Kimberley, Nina, and Appleton. And so, so coming back to the first column of numbers, you have the Oshkosh base salary. That is what our current base salary is here in Oshkosh. And when we say base salary, that does not include any longevity, okay? So, so if you take that, and then if you move over to the, the second column of, of numbers, dollar numbers, that is the five district average of Fond du Lac, Appleton, Kekana, Kimberley, and Nina. That's the average there. And then you come into the third column there, and that's the Oshkosh base plus the longevity. And that's if, and that's if they had a maximum longevity. A maximum longevity is somebody that's been with us for ten or more years.
Is it typical of these districts that they use a percentage of the base salary as well?
It's a combination. Good question. It's a combination. I mean, some use a base, some use a, a number, like thirty-five thousand or thirty thousand.
Just a flat rate number.
Flat rate number and a stipend on that. So, you know, it depends what's happened over the last couple of years for them. So, the other thing, before I go into any comparisons here, I want to bring your attention to the lower-left corner of this, of this study, lower-left corner, because it'll show here that, that the longevity is based on, if you have, if you stay with us for four years, your stipend increases by one-half percent. So, if your base was ten, now your stipend's ten and a half percent. If you stay with us for seven or more years, you get another half percent, so now your stipend, your stipend was ten percent, now your stipend's eleven percent. And if you stayed with the district coaching for ten or more years, it added another one percent, so now you went ten, eleven, your total coaching stipend would be twelve percent. So, with all that being said, we realized that when we looked at the base going from thirty-three, nine forty-six to thirty-eight thousand-ish, that there was a cost to that. My cost was about fifty thousand dollars. We also realized that the longevity movement would cost about twenty-five thousand dollars. We also realized that when we looked at the number of coaches, we were also shy on the number of coaches as compared to some comparables, the comparables of, of a number of the, of the schools that we have on this sheet. We knew that there was no way we could do all three of those items. That just wasn't a doable thing. So, then we thought, okay, what is, with what we have budgeted, which was about, which is about forty, forty-five thousand dollars, what would be the most valuable way to use those dollars for our coaching staff? And as we thought about that, we, we landed on the longevity. And the reason we landed on the longevity is because we wanted to honor and value those coaches that have stayed with us for multiple years, especially those coaches that have stayed with us for anywhere from seven, eight, nine, ten-plus years. So, that was really important to us, and, and we, we landed there. So, with that, bless you. If, if you take a look at the, at the Oshkosh base only, and you compare that to the five district average, you can see that we are quite a, quite a bit, with our base, we're quite a bit below that, that average.
But that's, that's the base based on the thirty-three thousand, obviously, not on the thirty-eight?
That's correct, Matt. That's based on the 33, that's correct. That's right. Because to go to 38 is $50,000. If you look at the five different, five district average column, and you look at the Oshkosh with maximum longevity, now this is somebody that has been with us 10-plus years because we couldn't break it down to four years and seven years. But if you look at somebody that's been maxed with us, you can see that if we do, if we do do the longevity, that it's going to put our coaches much more in the hunt with the five, five district average. It's going to, it's going to make us comparable and competitive with that five, five district average.
What percentage of the coaches would this affect then? Obviously, it's not going to be all of them. It's only going to be some of them. Are we talking about only 20% are receiving this benefit then, or what?
I'd say probably between 20 and maybe 40.
It's anybody who's been hired from, from probably the mid-2000s on that would, that this longevity piece would affect.
I, I thought, when we talked a little bit about this, I thought you guys said about, about 40 to 50%. What happens, what happens to coaches?
I mean, with four years of, of being frozen for four years, if somebody would have been hired in that first year where we last gave it, which was 10, 11, and they're still coaching now, it would impact them, they would get a movement. So, you know, we have a number of coaches that I think fall into that realm.
So our turnover of coaches is low enough that we, most of our, or at least, it sounds like about 40% of them would have been coaching for at least four years or more?
Good question, Matt.
Roughly out of 36 coaches, 18, you're saying would probably be affected by a longevity movement? Roughly half, correct?
Yeah, but we have, yeah. When you get 18 coaches, you're adding up the-
Combined north and west, there's about 120 coaches.
Okay. Thank you, Craig.
In middle school, we had about 20, 46, 70.
90, 90 coaches at the middle school level.
So we're 200 coaches total that are involved in the programs. Barb, do you have a question?
I do. Excuse me. I like the idea of conveying the way we value long-term employees who are dedicated to our students. So conceptually, I like what you brought forth here. Looking ahead to when some of those dedicated people may choose to retire, are you finding that the current compensation schedule is hindering your ability to fill vacancies? Or is it, and/or is it discouraging coaches in, say, a first, second year of coaching experience to say, "This is not worth my time"?
I think that the pool of candidates for coaching positions has definitely gone down over the years. Brad and I have been here 15 years and it's not like it once was. All the demands, you know, we're trying to hire teachers who also coach, that's, that's the best formula. And when, when the teachers, they have so much on their plate, a new teacher now, they struggle to be top-notch in the classroom and then, and then-
Coach, yeah.
Look to coach, and then if we're not compensating them like other districts near us, it's, it's easy for them to say, "I'm going to pass." And they say they're going to pass for a couple of years, and the next thing you know, it's 10 years have gone by and, and they, they've just decided to stay out of that business altogether and just continue to teach, which isn't a bad deal. But we want those, those excellent teachers also as our coaches and advisors, so that's just crucial.
I think too, when, when, you know, you're trying to attract an employee, if they are interested in coaching, they are taking a look and adding up the total package. And, you know, when you look at the data, we're, we're not comparable in some areas with the total package in some of the neighboring districts. So, you know, that may weigh against us if they're, you know, weighing everything as far as where they want to go.
Well, I think also what you're, as I look at this from a big-picture standpoint, you're, you're feeding into that first strategic goal about showing respect and honor for the work of the teachers who are typically the coaches. So I, I see a definite connection or alignment with that strategic goal and what you're proposing.
I think our long-term goal as we talk would be to have the base for the extracurricular be the, the teacher base, the 38,022. But we thought that was way too much to, to bite off in one chunk. So we thought if the first step would be to bring all these people up to the longevity that they've missed over the last three years, but then kind of wait to see what the state budget does, because we're heading into another two-year state budget that we have no clue where we're going to be at financially at this point. And then if, if that comes out favorably, then we would come back with maybe a, a long-term plan to how we get the schedule to be up there with the, with the current teacher salary max. Thank you.
Any questions?
Do any of the, like Fond du Lac or Appleton, do they also include longevity too? Just for a question for clarification, do they also have that longevity for like four additional years as well?
They do not all have it. Metaphor.
Kimberly and, and Oshkosh are the two right now. Most of the districts within the last three, four years have looked at this and made changes, and a lot of them are going away from longevity.
Okay, so, yeah, you could almost use that as a promotion. Why to choose Oshkosh too then? Because we're above average with the longevity.
If we're at 25,000 to do this and 50,000 to bring them up to the 38,000 teacher salary, if, if we're the only district other than Kakana, other than Kimberly that's offering the-
Longevity.
Longevity. And you're saying other districts are going away from longevity, would we better, be better off to go halfway toward the 38K? You know, at least get halfway there at this point. And then, as you say, when we know what happens in, in Madison, we could determine whether or not we could go the rest of the way and get you to where you want to be, which is the $38,000 teacher salary.
Are you saying, are you saying, Matt, to do half that base, so to speak, and the longevity?
No, I was saying to do half the base instead of the longevity.
We talked about that and, and it'd be nice to move the base up for our starting coaches. But we also have these coaches that have been with us multiple years that would not see the longevity or the stipend that would bring them as competitive in the, in the conferences as what we'd like. So that's why we settled on the people that have been with us for a number of years and shown that they want to stay with us. That's why we decided to start there. I mean, you know, we talked about bringing that up, just, it was a choice of where, where we were going to put what money we thought we had to be able to possibly allocate out, you know?
A lot of, some of these other districts have eliminated longevity, so we talked about that. If we truly get the base to be 38,000, let's not then have longevity. But some of these people who are maxed out, their current stipend is more than the base of 38 without longevity. So you'd have this whole group of people grandfathered here that we would have to keep grandfathered until the rest of the schedule kind of caught up with them, because you wouldn't want people to take a pay cut because we raised our base. So if the coaches that don't have longevity, going to the 38,000 or some halfway in between would get a significant raise. The people who are high now would get no raise at all because going to the 38 without longevity is less than what they're currently making. I don't know if I'm saying that right.
I got it.
I guess I'm in favor of the concept of longevity. We've talked about it in other support staff groups and stuff, and as Dr. Hertz said, I mean, this is part of what our strategic plan is called under one, is, is the whole attraction-retention thing. I think that if you have employees that have been with you a long time, and that's what you want, you want that, that experience level. And if we're rewarding people for sticking around that long, it's, you know, counterproductive. You can have a higher wage coming in, but if people still aren't sticking around, then what's the point? You're not, you're not gaining any experience, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, we don't want to be the, the farm club for the other teams, right? We want to keep our, our good people. How much is this going to cost us?
25,000.
25?
And it would be 50 to do the bump and longevity?
No, it would be 50 to do, to get from the current salary to the new salary would be 50,000.
And then some people would take a cut doing that?
Well, we would, we would propose that they be grandfathering, not cut.
Okay.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't grandfather, we wouldn't move anybody else in the longevity, into longevity under that proposal.
So would the 50,000 include the grandfathering, or would the grandfathering bring it to 60 or 70,000?
I think it does include it, but I'd have to go back and check.
I just wondered if there's a way to bump everybody, but also give the longevity to where people that have been here don't go backwards? Does that make sense? What would that cost?
But that hasn't been budgeted, correct?
Right.
It's at 44, you said you have 44,000 budgeted, so the 25 would obviously fit within it. Anything above that would be not already budgeted.
I just wondered what it would cost.
It's 50 to go up to 38, 22, and it's another 25 to do with the longevity.
Okay, thank you. I'm clear.
That was 75,000.
I'm clear now.
But the 25 would still require a vote. It's not what we, it's not what's been budgeted for, for this school year.
It is, because when we built the budget, we just assumed the longevity. So, so the money's in there.
Oh, okay.
But because this group hasn't had longevity, that's why we're waiting.
Okay. Other questions?
So they are intent to bring it back in two weeks in a resolution?
Well, I would urge everyone that if you have additional questions for them, please ask. This will be coming back before us on the 20 second. Thank you. Request for future agenda items? Do you have anything that they wish to see added to a future agenda? Seeing none, announcements? Ms. Herzog?
I attended a WASB regional meeting last night, which was really very informative and I think would provide some resources for us to at least consider in, in a couple of areas. One is when we do our annual self-evaluation of the board, there are some resources available through WASB that can be done online. So it would mean that the president and vice president of the board wouldn't have to hand tally things and the summaries. There are some great resources, as I'm sure you're all well aware of, more veteran viewers on the board than I have to offer, that we could tap with the WASB. Last night's piece primarily focused on the legal roles and responsibility of school boards. We got into topics like open meeting, public records, conflicts of interest and so on. And then this piece on the key work of school boards. And one of the, the pieces that was emphasized over and over was that the work of the board is really to focus on student achievement. And so I think that's, that's something that is good for all of us to keep in mind. There were also some studies cited that suggested that if the school board sets the tone, that the expectation is that all students can learn, there are studies to, to show that that does result in improved student learning throughout the organization with that expectation at the school level and certainly the classroom level. And that fits in with one of my beliefs, that we can't afford to leave any child behind. We have to educate everybody and assume that we can make, make strides and help, help students be successful. So as Julie always articulates so well, they are college, career, and community-ready. So anyway, it was a great workshop and-
When was that at?
That was, that one happened to be in Green Bay. I can't make the one tomorrow night. There's one for our region in, in Nina.
Yeah, I'm going to that one.
There's probably space in that one if some of you can go. But anyway, I just was very impressed with the, the key work of school boards piece that was shared and thought that it might have some implications for our work down the line.
My boards in Minnesota, my last boards worked with key works and I'm familiar with it. It's a very good program.
Other announcements? All right. Could I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under statute 19.851(c) of Wisconsin, discuss individual licensed employees' compensation?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Queen of hearts. Queen of hearts, I deal. I, 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 I,